Call me into order. I want to welcome everybody here. I'd like to call in councillor Swagstra to bring the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I picked up my package on Friday, I saw that I was due to give the opening and I immediately started thinking, what do I talk about? Because often in the openings, we may talk about something that happened to us recently or something that's been on our mind. And sort of thinking, what am I going to do? I need to come up with some sort of topic. And then something happened Friday night that gave me something that seems to be worth talking about. On Friday night, I went to bed. It was a normal night at our house. One of our sons was having a little camp out outside in his tent with a friend. They were doing a sleepover. I'd left the side door locked so that way they could get in if they needed to. And then I wake up on Saturday morning and I head to the garage, open the door, and there's no car. And the garage door is wide open. And then I take a look outside of the driveway and our van is gone as well. This was more of a little concerning. I ran back into the house. I woke Angela, my wife, up. The first thing we did was run around the house, make sure the kids were okay, because what's going on here? It didn't take long to realize that our car keys were gone. The spare set of keys that we had in a hole. And what had happened was that thieves came into our house overnight, brazenly walked into our house, searched around and found the keys. Fortunately, they did not damage anything else in the house. And most fortunately of all, nobody was hurt. Obviously, things could have turned out very differently if one of us or one of our kids had woken up in the middle of the night. Obviously, this has shaken us up. Frankly, I'm actually amazed at how well our kids are taking it. They seem to be more interested in asking questions about if they're going to catch the guys, what are they going to get charged with, that sort of thing. I phoned Steinbeck RCP, and I have to commend the RCP here. We've always known they do great work. But I was just so impressed at their professionalism, how they took the information so thoroughly. Within about half an hour, we had a police officer at our house. Because this was a serious crime. This wasn't just a car theft. It was actually thieves coming into a home in the middle of the night. And so they took down our information. And fortunately, they were able to locate the two vehicles in the next day or so. I don't know the state that they're in yet. They have to all be assessed and everything. But I do want to mention a couple of things just in relation to this that frankly touched me. I put up a Facebook post that same morning, just letting people know our cars got stolen. Here's the description. Here are the license plate numbers. Please keep an eye out. That was all I was looking for in terms of, I just wanted to get people to look out for our cars. Within two minutes of me putting that post up, I get a message from councillor John Fair saying, "Do you need a vehicle for the weekend?" I hadn't even thought about that very much. I responded saying, "Yeah, I think I do. We've got stuff we need to do and we need things we've got to pick up." And he says, "Okay, I'll be at your house in a few minutes. I'm going to take you. We're going to get you a vehicle." And incredibly gracious of him to do that. Within a minute of councillor John Fair calling me or messaging me, I then get a call from councillor Earl Funk, also offering me a vehicle. And, you know, I will say this, and I say this with all seriousness. Councillor Fair and councillor Funk, they didn't offer me a vehicle in order to get my vote or to get my support. They offered me vehicles because they are kind, generous men. I've known both of them for years, as I've known, and I will say that this is who they are. This is the type of thing that they do. And when councillor Fair took me to the dealership there, got me a vehicle, and now I'm driving this Mercedes-Benz for the next little while. Never driven a Mercedes before. What a deal! So, and I have to say that just in terms of the number of other people that reached out to us over the last couple of days, I mean, we had so many kind messages of support. We had a couple of families come drop off food at our house. We had some longtime friends of ours call us up and say, "We're taking you out this evening. It's our treat." Just little things like that, just showing what a great community we live in. And, you know, yes, we're shaken up. This has been a tough thing, having our house, having thieves break into our house and take keys, and we're dealing with that. But I have to say that the response of the people of Steinbeck shows that that's what Steinbeck is. And I am proud to live in Steinbeck. I believe that we are a great city. We are a safe city. Yes, there are crime issues we have to address. We all know that. And we will continue to work on that, continue to support our RCPs as we address these things and as we look at some of these other issues. But let's not lose sight of the fact that we live in the most generous city in Canada. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Swagstra. We have the agenda in front of us. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Councillor Penner, second by councillor Funk. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the minutes in front of us from July 17th. You've all had a chance to review these already. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes, please? Councillor Fair, second by councillor Siemens. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. No business arising from the minutes. We'll now move to the public hearing, and this is a conditional use hearing, 2018-04, in regards to 40 Northgate Drive, page eight for council. Mr. Workineteen, I'll ask you to introduce this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is a conditional use application file CU-2018-04 for property with civic address of 40 Northgate Drive in Steinbeck. The owner of the property is Northview Development, LTD, Schinkle Properties, Inc., and Prospect Land and Cattle Company. The applicant for the conditional use is Mr. Mike Fast. Purpose of the application is to allow a funeral home to locate on the subject property. There are notices that are required under the Planning Act have been issued. There's no written correspondence on file with respect to the application. This is a brand-new commercial subdivision and development. There are no currently developed sites within the development. It doesn't appear as if the application would have any negative impact on the neighborhood. Therefore, administration recommendation is that council approve the conditional use, subject to any new information that may be provided.
Thank you. We do have a representative of the applicant here today. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? One final time, is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Are there any questions for the applicant from council at this time? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to speak?
There's no questions.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Swagstra?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Second by councillor Fair. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This seems like a fairly straightforward decision. This is an area which is zoned C3, Commercial Corridor. This is a conditional use. There are no other properties in the area, which means that there are no neighbors that would be negatively impacted. And he was providing important service, and I think it's appropriate to approve.
Thank you. Further discussion? Go ahead, councillor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am a neighbor there, actually. And I'm going to welcome a little bit more industry to that part of the, I don't know if I can call it industry, but some business to that area. And so I won't feel quite so lonely there.
You and 10,000 vehicles a day. All right. Any further discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We will now move the reports and recommendations of the city manager, 8A. This is in regards to 332 Hanover Street, on page 18. Mr. Workineteen.
This is a property that has recently been listed for sale within the city of Steinbeck. It's located at 332 Hanover Street. The city has been in the process of acquiring a number of residential properties in and around the T.G. Smith Center for many years. This property fits within that strategy. The recommendation is that council approve the purchase of 332 Hanover Street for Mr. Timothy Weave, for the purchase price of $172,900, with a possession date of August 15, 2018.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Penner?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Penner. Go ahead.
Yes, this purchase is part of the continuing strategy that we have to continue to buy land in order to make sure that in the future, there's a reasonable chance for long-term development in that area.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything further from council? Councillor Fair?
I have a question of administration.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Could the city manager tell me what the appraisal of this property was?
There has been no recent appraisal conducted for this property. It was publicly listed for sale with a real estate agent for the price as offered.
Thank you. Further discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will not support this property purchase. For the past few months, the city has been grappling with the old SCU building and sharing our off-hour parking with the church. I don't necessarily disagree with the decision, but we have so little parking in the area already, as we have been told by Minor Hockey, you know, further in our package here. The last time I looked at my wallet, if I have a dollar to spend, I can't spend it two places. So to continue to share more parking facilities with more and more organizations is not very good. And I think if we decide to build a multiplex in the area, it will need to be used more than just when the SCU is closed. So I think it's not in our best interest to build much more downtown. Therefore, I don't believe it's in our best interest to buy all the properties in the area. Further, I've talked to some of the business people that are in the area and that potentially would like to locate the area, and they're kind of afraid because they might be bought out. So I think we're sending a message there that, to me, it's just not a wise decision.
All right. Further discussion? Councillor Penner?
I just wanted to respond to councillor Fair's comments. I don't think we're necessarily, or when I'm voting for this, I'm not necessarily voting it with the intention that there's going to be a multiplex downtown. We could turn it into a nice park. We could encourage some multifamily. There's a variety of things we could do. At the end of the day, while we own the properties, we're getting rental income. If in the future, future councils decide to go a different direction, those properties can be sold. So it's not a high-risk investment, what we're doing. And I think there's a lot of potential for what we could do with that land that has nothing to do with a multiplex. And I think if we do it right, it's actually going to be desirable for downtown. And a benefit for downtown, not a hindrance.
Thank you. Further discussion? Any?
I'll...
All right. Anything in closing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would concur with councillor Penner's comments as well. I think the intention of council over the years, as we've purchased additional parcels of land, is to create a parcel large enough so that if there is a new initiative coming in, not necessarily a multiplex, but it could be a hotel, it could be any number of large kind of developments, housing or commercial entities that want space downtown, that it will be able to be provided for them, and it will create a vibrant downtown.
Thank you. Council, this is something that's been going on for decades, and the successive councils have been involved in this. These properties are really, this is really about having options for us in the future. And when it comes to redevelopment in that area, whether it's green space, whether it's increasing density, whether it's increasing mixed use, this purchase will improve those options going forward. Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed. Carried. All right. We have 8B. We have the Arm of La Brocree Development Plan. We all had a report to follow. Mr. Workineteen, anything to add?
Just in summary, Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, the package was provided in council's bins on Friday for further consideration. With respect to the proposed development plan and zoning by law of the Arm of La Brocree, the city's position with respect to the land use policies and the transitional policy area that has been consistent over many decades, again, with the proposed changes to the development plan, particularly with the proposed removal of the transitional policy area. In my view, I would recommend that city council authorize the city to be filing an objection with the Arm of La Brocree, and recommend that that proceed.
Thank you. How would council like to proceed? Councillor Penner?
I'd like to make a motion that we file an objection.
Thank you. Seconder, councillor Swagstra. Anything to add?
Yes. We have provincial land use policies that guide development for municipalities in the province of Manitoba. And according to the recommendation of our administration, that the proposed development plan of the Arm of La Brocree will not be in compliance with those provincial land use policies.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is consistent with the position that we have taken on an ongoing basis, and is also consistent with provincial land use policies.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Anything in closing? No? Counsel, obviously, we've enjoyed working together with the Brocree Council on the Joint Action Committee. We have met. We have talked about our things that we have in common and the things that we see as differently. This is one of those areas, that transition policy, I think is an important policy. And to object, I think, would be appropriate because I think it's a good tool for us to continue to work together. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. All right. 9A, we have the counts payable in the back of the book. You've had a chance to review those. Can I have someone? Oh?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Before you proceed, there is also the matter of La Brocree zoning bylaw 07-2018.
Which is related, yeah.
Which is related and also part of the information package.
All right. You need a motion on that as well?
I would recommend that that also be moved, first of all.
Okay. All right. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Siemens?
I'd make a motion to object to the zoning bylaw as well.
Thank you. A seconder, please. Councillor Penner, thank you. Anything further?
Not really, just for the same reasons that it is all involved versus the plan, but also their zoning, which dictates how the land is used. That would be appropriate to formally object to that as well.
Thank you. Anything further? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. All right. We do have the counts payable in the back of the book. You have had a chance to review those. Can I have a motion to approve those, please? Thank you, councillor Penner. Second by councillor Fair. Any discussion? Anything further from council? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the financial statements ending on June 30th thus far. Can I have someone move the motion to approve? Thank you, councillor Penner. Second by councillor Siemens. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Building permits for July. This is on page 26. You've all had a chance to review those. You see a motion on the bottom of page 27. Obviously, year-to-date, we see almost edging towards $24 million this year so far, which is a good year. Can I have that motion moved, please? Councillor Swagstra moves that motion on page 27, second by councillor Penner. Any discussion? Anything further from council? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have business licenses on page 28. You've had a chance to review those. There's a motion on page 28. Councillor Fair moves that. Is there a seconder? Councillor Penner? Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have, next, we have bylaw 2104. This is Lowen Boulevard and PTH 12 North. This is first reading on page 29. Mr. Workineteen, I'll ask you to introduce this, please.
Yes, this bylaw 2104 is a road widening bylaw for a portion of Lowen Boulevard, which is located at the corner of Lowen Boulevard and PTH 12. The widening is in conjunction with a planned development that is also proceeding on that corner. And the provision of land is by consent agreement. Recommendation is that city council give first reading to bylaw 2098.
All right. Thank you. How would council like to proceed? Councillor Fair?
I'll move first.
Move first reading, second by councillor Penner. Any discussion?
Basically, it's, Mr. Mayor, basically, I think it's been said, I think it's a very appropriate move, and I commend the developer and city administration for working together in making a potentially problematic corner, something that's going to be a lot more maneuverable because there's a trucking road there.
Thank you. Anything further?
Nothing further.
Anything further from council? Anything in closing? All right. Counsel, this is in regards to long-term planning. Obviously, we know that that corner does need some work in the future. We want to make sure that it's efficient and working well. We don't want to see traffic lights lying on the ground many times that we have over the last number of years. This eventually will improve that scenario. And obviously, this is in regards to our long-term planning initiative when it comes to traffic management. Call for the question, all those in favor. We will now move to 9F, bylaw 2098. This is a road renaming. This is on page 35. Counsel, you've already discussed much of this at the SPC level. Mr. Workineteen, I'll ask you to just briefly introduce this. On page 41 is a list of the changes.
Correct. There's the summary and the schedules appear from pages 42 through 44. As you mentioned, this has been presented to council at committee earlier this year. And along with the recent addition of lands to the city's boundaries, and also with the request from Canada Post to try and coordinate the road renaming, along with their readdressing and community mailbox placement for these new properties, recommendation is to give the road renaming bylaw 2098 first reading.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Swagstra?
Move approval.
Thank you. Second by councillor Siemens. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that we have discussed before at our SPC meeting, and really, this just makes sense. This is where we have a Steinbeck road name, and now in the newly annexed areas, the road that continues on and is really part of that road will just simply continue to have the same name. So examples, Clear Springs Road West, Keating Road, Park Road West, Mackenzie Avenue, as opposed to the road numbers. And so this will make it simpler for people to understand, and so I think it makes sense to approve the renaming.
Thank you. Anything further? Call for the question, all those in favor, first reading. We have 9G. We have the municipal board appointments. This is in regards to bylaw 2097, on page 45. Mr. Workineteen?
This public notice is, or notice is provided on page 45 with respect to the municipal board hearing, which is scheduled for tomorrow. Recommendation is that council authorize both the city planner, Lacy Godet, and also myself, as city manager, to represent the city of Steinbeck at the public hearing.
Thank you. How would council like to proceed? Councillor Penner?
I'll take first.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Swagstra. Any discussion? Anything further from council? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Any questions of council? Councillor Funk?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. This question's for administration, just for some clarification. In some of our new areas, in Crescent Wood, Park Hill, when you come to a corner lot, and some of these lots, many of these lots are side-by-sides, the curbing is coming like a full curve well into the driveway and past the driveway, and then it steps down to a driveway type curbing. Is there, has our spec changed, and is there anything that can be done? In some of the situations, the residents coming home have to go into the oncoming traffic to get enough clearance to turn around and get on the driveway. And with a, I did it with a bigger truck, and it takes about a four-point turn to get into there. I was just wondering if there's, if our spec has changed, and if there is something that can be done, or is this, this is our new spec, and this is something we can do?
Mr. Workineteen? Has anything changed in the spec book in regards to that?
Not to my knowledge. There is a required setback from intersections with respect to private driveways entering the public roadway. That primary reasoning is for safety, just due to the traffic activity that occurs at intersections. To my knowledge, that isn't a new item that's changed.
I just, I'd like to make a statement because this looks more unsafe than if the curb was cut so they could just stay in their lane and turn onto their property. Because they have to go into the oncoming traffic and come and turn around that way because of the sharp angle getting onto their property.
All right.
I mean, we can look at it later. I have pictures if you want to look at it. It does look awful.
All right. What I can maybe make a suggestion is that, you know, I think I've seen a picture of what you're talking about, and I get the awkwardness of it. There might be more to that story, and what we can maybe ask is the administration to come back with, either the next council meeting or subsequent, with further information on the background on that, and then what either could be changed or why it is the way it is.
That would be good, because then we'd at least move the real.
Alternatively, I could just provide council with general information of what the policy is and put that in council's mail bins.
Sure. That would be very good, too. Thank you. Councillor Penner?
Further to that issue, I guess my question in that would be, is, when you provide us information, is it the developer or the builder's responsibility, or homeowners agreeing to the, just kind of how that is even happening? Because really, it shouldn't be happening. Then the side-by-sides perhaps are too big for those properties, because it's usually happening in those situations.
What you're suggesting is that the question is in regards to who gets notified and when, when it's a corner lot.
Yeah, because if that's our side-by-by, like if that's what the policy is, then somebody's maybe willfully not following it, for example.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get more information on that, and it'll be placed in our bins. And if there's further questions on that, then we can bring those back as well.
Yeah, I'd like to just make one more statement on that, because this is a side-by-side where the driveways are on each end of the side-by-side. I think if the side-by-side, if the developer would have built a side-by-side where there's a shared driveway, I think it would have fit in there quite nicely, you know? And yet, they're this way, and then one's got a straight driveway, one driveway goes at quite an angle. And I think maybe that's something that the developer could look at, and they would obviously know where the curb is. Imagine the curb's in place by the time they dig, you know? And maybe that would be something the developer could do.
That may...
Ensure that a different style of side-by-side goes there.
So that may well be part of what the information is that is provided to us.
Despite the city's best efforts, interesting development challenges still seem to occur from time to time.
Very good. We'll eagerly await that information in our bins. All right. We have correspondents and petitions. We have 11A. We have the minutes from April, May, and June on page 46 of the Jacob Public Library. Take that as information. 11B, we have correspondence from Melanie Turen-Ebert in regards to the stop sign request on page 52. This is at the corner of Reimer and Elmdale. This is on page 52. Any action from council? Councillor Funk?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I know our administration's busy and not, I don't know when the last study had done of that corner, but I'd like to receive the most recent numbers we have, or maybe we can do a study to see what is warranted.
Thank you. Mr. Workineteen, offhand, do you know when the last study was done in regards to that intersection? I recollect it's been the last few years, but I don't know exactly.
Other than general conceptual planning and design with respect to the reconstruction Uh, other than general conceptual planning and design with respect to the, uh, reconstruction of Elmdale, uh, I'm not sh- certain if there's been a specific study with respect to traffic movements, et cetera.
Okay, all right, well, we'll ask you to look into that and, and, uh, put it in our bin.
Very well.
All right, we have 11C, the Minister of Municipal Relation in regards to community development, uh, grants, these are the Community Places Grants, in regards to Geese Brick Street Playground, you all saw that announcement? Any, any action required? Take it as information. We have 11D, Minister of Municipal Relations in regards to the Steinbeck Aquatic Center funding. Any action required? Take it as information. We have 11E, we have the Manitoba Intergovernmental Affairs, Small Communities Transportation Fund. Page 56. Any action required? Take it as information. We have correspondence from David Banman in regards to Sunday shopping and the request to have a referendum. Any action required? Counselor Siemens?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a issue that has come before council, uh, a number of times, and, uh, we've heard, uh, from the chamber, the last time this was before the con- before, uh, council, when we asked them the question, I think it would be prudent at this time to, uh, I'm putting a motion forward that we should put, make this, uh, non-binding question on the October 24th ballot.
Okay, thank you, is there a seconder? Counselor Penner, go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a, a question that is before us in a variety of different ways, and we often answer the question by seeking our own, uh, answers by the people that, that, uh, we communicate with, so when, uh, we want, uh, certain answers, we go to the business community, we go to the chamber, uh, like last time, we asked the Chamber of Commerce what their thoughts were on Sunday shopping, and, uh, when we want other questions, then we hold referendums and questions, um, on the question like the cannabis issue, and the reason we're putting cannabis issue forward is because we want a, an answer from the general public whether it should be for sale. Part of this here, too, is, uh, we get, uh, different feedback, most of the feedback we will have is those that are, uh, against it, and solidly against, we'll hear that feedback, and those that are for Sunday shopping won't necessarily provide that feedback, uh, but we have that feedback as well, but not as much as those that are against Sunday shopping. So, either way, I think this is, uh, we've got a request here for a, uh, to put the question forward, there's no additional cost to putting another line on the ballot, it's a, it's another, uh, place, uh, and then we will know what the community wants. In, uh, conjunction with that, we should also put that question forward to the chamber so they can also, uh, provide us with information, and, uh, the new council then, in, uh, using that information can make, uh, a determination of what the next steps should be, uh, then they hear from the general public, the, the voting public as well as they hear from the business community.
Thank you. Counselor Penner?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I also, uh, concur with Counselor Siemens on this, um, issue of, uh, having it, uh, remi- um, be a question on our, uh, on the ballot, because, uh, it is time for us to hear from the citizens, I think, uh, we've talked about it long enough, we've, we've, as, as you mentioned, we have heard comments, uh, from people saying they don't want it, or they do want it, but, uh, that really doesn't give us a clear guideline at all, and we need to really know what the people think.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Penner?
Just to clarify, non-binding, so we get the results, and then after we get the results, we don't necessarily follow what they say.
Just so we have the information.
Sorry.
Today, we don't have that information. We have, we hear from the, the interest groups.
Sorry, Counselor Siemens, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Uh, I think we hear from the various interest groups, we hear people's personal opinions, and that's good, that, that's what it's about, as we, but we've never gone out there and elicited feedback, this is one way of getting feedback from the general public on what their thoughts are on it, and, uh, I think we all know, or we think we know, what the results will be, that's not necessarily so, uh, ballot will give us that, and there is no extra cost to it, that's why we should be doing it at this time, to do it at any other time would be approximately $10,000, and have a poor voter turnout, potentially this time we'll have a voter turnout, and we will hear what the general public wants. On the other side of that whole piece, too, is, uh, if, uh, today businesses can't choose to be open unless it pay a penalty, if they have more than four employees, so maybe that is a choice that they want today, and we're not giving them that opportunity to be open, uh, if they have more than four employees, so I think, this is a, uh, to put the question out there so that, uh, the general public, in a non-binding way, that, uh, then council has more information to make, uh, the decision.
Thank you, Counselor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the mover and seconder, what is the question? I heard a motion, have a referendum on Sunday shopping, the cannabis one, there was an exact question before us that was laid out by the province, what is the actual question?
Question be, should the city of Steinbeck allow Sunday shopping?
But as, Mr. Banman pointed out, we do for, it, it, that's a provincial, that's not a clear question, I want to know what the question is before there's any vote on this here, what is the question?
I don't have a question today, but I, we need to come up with that question, if we vote in favor of this, then we will put the question forward, if we vote against it, then we don't need to come up with a question, the question is, will we allow Sunday shopping in Steinbeck?
Thank you, further question, further comments, Counselor Fair?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, on this one here, I'm going to, uh, defer to the, the business community that I have mostly been communication with, and I believe that a referendum may well, uh, favor Sunday shopping, uh, I don't know whether I'm going to put my fellow business people in a position where they have to be open or they don't want to be open, so, uh, therefore, I think, uh, I, I will not support the motion.
Thank you, further discussion, Counselor Swagstra?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I guess my concern here is that, uh, I'm not opposed in principle to having, uh, having a referendum on, on various issues, I've never, I've never had a problem with that, and some people don't like referendums in general, I've never, I've never been one of those, um, but I think there's a valid question to be raised about what's, what is the threshold for having, you know, a question of this nature, and right now, the threshold seems to be a letter from one person, uh, and, I guess, this is a fundamental change in regards to affecting, affecting the community, and I just don't see this as a major issue that comes up a huge amount, I mean, I've got lots of door knocking over the years, and I can count, uh, like, one or two hands, like, there's a few people brought it up, it hasn't come up a lot, so, uh, I think we're already asking a very important question in regards to cannabis, and I don't know if we, uh, we want to have a ballot where we have a bunch of, uh, of various questions there, so, and I, I, I still, I don't think it's terribly clear in terms of, in terms of what, uh, in terms of what the question is, I suppose it's to allow the, allow the exemption under the Holiday Businesses and Retailing Act, and, uh, but, I, I hope that that is clearly spelled out if this motion, if the motion passes, but, uh, so no, I won't vote in favor of the motion.
Further discussion? Counselor Funk?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, I will vote against the motion, too, I have just, maybe I ran in all the wrong circles, but I just haven't heard enough of a case for Sunday shopping, uh, yes, this letter's before us now, but this is, this, this is all I hear, or, as, if something comes like that, you hear a little bit, it leans down after a day or two, so I, I don't know if there's enough appetite for this, so I'm just going to vote against it.
Thank you, further discussion? Counselor, Counselor Penner?
I'll just comment, um, after the initial presentation, comments I heard was, what people like about Steinbeck is that we don't have Sunday shopping, it's a day for families, it's a day of rest, it's what makes Steinbeck unique, which is part of the appeal of Steinbeck, and to allow it would, to a certain degree, fundamentally cha- fundamentally change the appeal of what Steinbeck has going forth, more traditional values with, I recognize we're growing and we're changing, so I'm not, um, I'm not oblivious to that, but at the same time, as for Counselor Swagstra's comment, I'm not sure that one letter is enough to call a referendum or have a referendum on a question, uh, I have the same experience as Counselor Swagstra, where I, I really don't hear about the issue on a day-to-day basis, I hear a lot more about other things we're doing, um, so because I haven't had time to think about it, I, I will not support the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Penner?
Uh, yes, um, I just want to address some of the, um, the comments that were brought forward, um, uh, as, as to the threshold, uh, the letter itself, I think merely reflects the thoughts of many people in the city that are wondering why there is no Sunday shopping, there is no place to buy their groceries on Sunday, uh, particularly, um, so I don't think it's something that hasn't been in the minds of Steinbeck citizens, I think it's been there for quite a while, and this one letter has brought it to our attention, but I think it's certainly been in the minds of, of people in the city. As we've grown, we are changing, and things are changing rapidly from what they have been, uh, I, for one, am not afraid to put a referendum forward and ask the people what they would prefer, whether it's not, or whether it's yes.
Thank you. Counselor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to, just to point out that, uh, because one of the things that's been raised in the past is the question of, uh, you know, is it preventing, you know, things from happening in Steinbeck, I just want to point out that Steinbeck has for a number of years been either the fastest or the second fastest growing city in, in Manitoba, the one we're in constant competition with is Winkler, which also doesn't have the full Sunday shopping, so, we have, uh, and I remember hearing the rumors that if we didn't have Sunday shopping, we wouldn't get Superstore, we got Superstore, if we didn't have Sunday shopping, we wouldn't do Wal-Mart, if we didn't get Sunday shopping, we, and yet we have all these stores, so clearly, uh, our current arrangement where you have the partial Sunday shopping, as has been pointed out, uh, has not hindered our economic growth.
Thank you. And in closing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, these are all valid points, the, the reason that I bring it up here isn't to formulate an opinion here today, because we're not making a decision whether there should be Sunday, is to have the discussion. At council here in the past, and this has come to our council table, we have taken it as information, and we've, uh, worked with, uh, with our constituents, and we've all formulated our opinion, we've never made a decision here at council, uh, whether we should have Sunday shopping or not, we've only, uh, said, uh, we'll take it as information and we'll revert back to provincial policy, so we've done that ongoing, and that, uh, I agree with, uh, Counselor, uh, Susan Penner here as well, is, uh, I think Steinbeck is unique, I, I, for my part, we don't have to have Sunday shopping, I think that's good, those are my opinions, and, and I often vote with, uh, how I feel here at, at council, but because this has come to council a number of different times, we need to have that discussion around this table, uh, whether to allow it or not in some form, so that, uh, that in itself will, uh, provide us with more, uh, public feedback, for, for that reason, I put it on the table here, and I do think that it would be a question that would be, uh, relevant on the ballot on October 24th.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I won't speak about Sunday shopping, because we're really talking about whether we, uh, govern by referendum or not, and I'm not a big fan, I haven't been, I've been proving that in the last number of weeks, of governing with referendums, uh, Sunday shopping itself is a whole nother question that we can, we as a council can deal with right here at this table, we don't have to have a referendum, uh, we do, uh, we can certainly consult with constituents, we can certainly consult with, uh, business people, and we have in the past, we've had numerous, I think, two, la- the last, uh, I think in the last decade, we had at least two surveys done by the Chamber of Commerce, which has been quite clear in how some businesses felt at those times, uh, that helps us with information, you're right, uh, but for me, I'm not a fan of governing by referendum, and so I'll vote against it. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. All right. Counsel, we have 11G, we have the Steinbeck Minor Hockey, uh, intra- uh, letter in regards to SU parking, this is on page 61. Any action or questions?
That will take a different.
Counselor?
Just the comment?
Counselor Fair?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just a comment, and, uh, I think that this, uh, uh, letter reinforces what I mentioned earlier regarding parking in the downtown area, so.
Thank you. Take it as information. There's no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Penner, all those in favor?
Oh, that one passed.
Carried. Thank you.